Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the color for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, thanks. Thanks again for our regular meeting. We're also continuing our board assessment review hearing. Is that correct, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have to start that?
Yes.
Let's close that out. Today is March fourteenth. Tonight is a continuation of our meeting of the board of review, the board trustees, the departments of holding a second grievance night previous night. And I get motion to approve the following resolution. Whereas a grievance night on the year of the board review of February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, board found certain applicants for real property tax assessment reductions, they don't provide any information or provide insufficient information to make the board make proper determinations that their assessments were illegal, erroneous, or unequal. Whereas, the applicants do not supply relevant information with their grievance night complaints, and they did not produce additional information relating to their assessed property on before three thirty P M. on March fifth, two thousand nineteen. And the board finds that the aforesaid grievance have provided insufficient information to allow the board assessment review to make a determination that such assessments are illegal, erroneous, or unequal, and that such failure to provide sufficient information was willful, and therefore pursuant to section five twenty-five to A. of the real property tax law, the aforesaid grievance are not entitled to any deduction of their assessments. Before I ask for motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It is, um...
Assessment?
Assessment.
No, please, it's here.
Okay. Okay. You didn't say anything, and, okay. Thank you. It's now making a motion. Trustee McKeon makes that motion. Can I get a second on that? Trustee Bowbrook seconds on that motion. I'll vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Whereas, several applicants provided sufficient information to support the reduction of their assessment, and five applicants have agreed to the board's assessment reductions. Can you provide the list, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I just read it?
One address.
Yes.
Forty-five Russell Road, one oh-three Traneford Road, one ninety-six Hurston Road, one thirty-eight Cambridge Avenue, and eighty-fifth Street.
Could I get a motion in favor of the aforesaid? Trustee McKeon has seconded by trustee higher. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to make to approve the following resolution? Whereas, a grievance night hearing helped before the board review on February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas the village council and village assessor have reviewed with the board various corrections and/or adjustments which needed to make the final assessment roll to the five accounts previously mentioned? I need a motion.
Oh, so five different.
Oh, sorry, different ones. Can you name those, please?
Sure.
Sorry.
One is eighty-nine Apple Street, and the next four are all seventy-one Clinton Road. Four properties at seventy-one Clinton Road.
Thank you, sir. Trustee McKeon makes that motion, seconded by trustee McKeon. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting of the board assessment review? Trustee Delaney makes that motion. Second on that. Trustee Bowbrook, all those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, trustee Delaney, for terminating that hearing. Okay. Thank you. Do we need to approve minutes of the prior meeting of the board assessment? Or is it here we need to approve it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll start our regular meeting. Again, thank you for coming. We have a full board here tonight, so we have a forum, and we have, again, full board, knowledge was provided. Does anyone have, uh, staff or, uh, Mr. Swasey, any few items on, uh, generally you'd like to give a quick review? I think Mrs. Wu might want to give a couple.
Yes, as always, I'd like to have each department go over the elements in their area, but, uh, regards to the first page, three D., thirty thousand dollars to central data processing, this is for the consultant fees for Total Technology Solutions, our big T. provider. This year, we had some extraordinary, um, expenses related to our server farm, specifically catastrophic hardware failure to our, one of the police servers, um, which required extensive hours, over seventy-six hours of repair, more than fifteen thousand dollars. So we're running short on the maintenance fee that runs us through the end of May, so I'm going to touch with the board, transfer thirty thousand dollars from unused money and regular salary from the open position to that account.
How old is this server?
The server was sold that we had to buy the part off of eBay and drive this out and pick it up. This is what actually spurred the virtualization.
Okay. So we're running into this again?
Yes. We have obviously, uh, hardware, we have outdated and unsupported operating systems, so every time we have a serious problem, it's more than, it's just four hours besides forty hours, they had to quit.
Again, now, server is basically gone as far as we're concerned?
It's gone.
Okay. Do you have any other?
How old is the server? About twenty years old?
No, server is, server's not that old. You know, I don't want to, I don't have the actual age in front of me, but it's not within five years, it's certainly not on the warranty, and the parts were not available. So it's, that one was significantly older, so it's not how old it was.
But again, our larger plan is now, will now void-
Larger plan replaces all hardware, modern operating system, warranties, twenty-four hour service, and it simplifies environment, so.
You put that server over the old grinder from down the street?
As I launched that process, said we would never buy a part off eBay again.
If anyone else is looking for the server part, should maybe I'll be, thank you very much. Okay, next. I really want to, just in the summary of the-
So for the finance department, uh, there's a couple of items related to the police department. There is, um, a request to appropriate funding for the termination reserves for a longtime police officer who has retired from the village. Uh, the police is also seeking, uh, the appropriation of some grant, whatever these stuff received, um, for the purchase of bulletproof vests. Um, on this page, we have, um, various transfers that are being processed, and this is due to the recently settled C S A agreement, um, where every employee in that unit will be receiving one ton, one ton less than paying your thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, so transfers are being done. Typically, we do these transfers from contingency, but the contingency fund was used, uh, earlier in the year for other, um, items, uh, so we do have favorable bearings. Rather than taking the funding from surplus, we are transferring favorable bearings in the judgments and claims line that we see that we have this year. Um, so the total is about a little over five hundred thousand dollars that's being allocated to all the funds for those employees.
Any questions? I mean, I think people should understand, we settled a contract with our largest union workforce. We have been without a contract for six years, seven, six years. We settled six past years and two years going forward. Um, I personally think, but I think the board agrees, we got a great deal. Long, hard fought. Did we get everything? No, of course not, but that's settling. That's negotiations. We will, we will keep pushing and trying to improve what we get in productivity, and that's our goal, and savings, but we know people deserve to get paid as well, so, uh, that's, that's the way we operate, and we'll continue to operate that way. Anything else? Okay. Bishop?
Okay. No, no, no. Okay. Hi, Mayor. I just saw number two. Uh, that was a federal grant that, uh, we purchased eight vests, and they reversed it on half of them. They also have a grant application to the state for the other half, and we feel that may come through, and, uh, we also have, uh, several other requests for vests that we just purchased, so should we get more money in the future. Number five, the, uh, we have also has to go upstate twice a year for the scales, that's a mandatory state requirement for, uh, to be able to testify for law enforcement violations regarding weight violations, so, uh, that has to be done. Uh, just for instance, we had several court cases in January, and the first thing they usually ask for the other, the attorneys for the truckers are, uh, what is your certification for the scales? So that has helped us in our testimonies. Number six is the annual traffic safety conference. Normally, they cover the registration and torts piece. This year, I was able to get lodging also covered, so we only have to cover the travel and meals. So, and that's a great conference that helps us with, uh, current highway safety issues and challenges, uh, grant applications, serious physical injury and fatal crash investigations, triomphant P D S D. and suicide prevention awareness, and incident leadership responsibilities at traffic series accident scenes.
Bishop, do we, I know we've asked before, and I'm sure I have, I just can't remember. We have more than one officer who can do the truck scales?
Yes, we have, uh, we have several certified offices.
So they just go up to different times to get-
Yes, they go up, uh, well, yeah, this one, the one officer is the main guy, he does, he's the, he has, he's actually federally certified, uh, truck inspector, but the other two guys can pitch in and help him with, uh, weight scales. But he's the primary guy, and he's, uh, best person in court.
How long is that certification good for?
Six months out of time, so.
So every six months you have to get-
Every six months. And that's the first thing they ask for in a trial.
Okay. So we have another one, all three at the same level of certification?
It's very complex.
Someone wins the lottery and quits? What do we do?
Oh, absolutely. We have, well, we have guys who do the scales and, and step in, but to be a certified truck inspector, it's, you have to, it's several weeks of training, usually not local, we have to go far away, but we, we'll look into that, and sometimes we get a grant for that, so we'll try to get that done.
I think we would prefer to have these two sort of at the higher level. Let's figure it out.
We'll do.
That's not reasonable.
We have about six guys who are certified for weight. The truck inspection is a lecture, but sometimes they go hand in hand.
And do they all testify in court, or just-
They all testify in court, yes.
And I had, I had a bad question, number one.
I could get them to work at the same time, moving forward and getting asked for the grant at the same time. Isn't that the way it works, Bishop? I'm sorry. Isn't that the way it works? If you want to get a grant, you kind of, got to sign people up for stuff and try to get the grant at the same time. Am I correct?
Yeah, some, sometimes it goes both ways. Sometimes you ask for an advance for the person in that type of training, sometimes they, they, it comes to you, so it's, it's hard. We have, uh, two officers going to, uh, truck inspector school in Suffolk County in, in about a month and a half, so that's the start, and then goes into the weight. So we are moving forward with that, and we use some of our young guys-
Just look at it and see what, you know, listen to it.
Absolutely, and Suffolk County runs a very good school, so we are, we're moving forward with that.
On the, I had a question on the, um, on the three A.'s. So is this money we get only if it's done on overtime?
Yes, this is overtime, uh, it's grant overtime money, so they want you to do, to get this money, you have to do extra patrols. So what we know we'll do is, uh, the seatbelt, there's one parent using seatbelts, usually in the, the major area, and then, uh, the aggressive drivers all year round. A lot of times, we use the aggressive driver in the beginning of school year, when the kids go, you know, walk from the school, and we do a lot of traffic closing in the school rooms. And, uh, and every year, they accept it us and then give us grants back to close to that.
Okay, so it's kind of set up as, you know, this would be extra, it's a way to get the reimbursement stuff?
Yes, and we're actually waiting for, uh, a D W. White money to come school yet, so, uh, hopefully we'll get that in the next month.
Anyone else still want to highlight? So we can add some more. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item seven, I just want to mention, um, in our last board meeting, we also had an additional, uh, change order for field two. Uh, this one is, we had waited on this, we knew we had to replace the scoreboard there, everything else is going to be brand new. Uh, we didn't include it in the specification, um, because we wanted to get through the project, make sure we didn't need the contingency, we had set aside, but, uh, we're okay now. Uh, we're recommending the purchase of a replacement scoreboard, uh, that would be installed in the outfield, it's remote control, um, again, available under the, uh, under the contract. Um, item number eight, uh, I recommend that we send two of our senior staff members to the, uh, New York State Ricken Parks Annual Conference. For years, we have always been represented while there, the past president of the, uh, of the, uh, society, um, so it's a good opportunity for some other people to, uh, network with others in the same field, um, learn about new, uh, software, specialized maintenance equipment, uh, recreation trends that are coming, and, uh, I highly recommend that, stay connected to the field. Um, item number nine, we have before you is a, um, request and a recommendation I'm not for, and a request from the, uh, food concessionaire that holds license agreement currently for the pool and, um, other park areas, um, D and J., to extend their, um, their license agreement with the village, with the understanding that they will, uh, invest, uh, just about thirty thousand dollars in capital improvement that is needed, uh, between the department. We have identified that countertops and, uh, the supports underneath them are in need of replacement at the pool. Um, we also have been, uh, notified that we need proper storage space at the trailer concession owned by the, uh, roller rink, uh, so there would be a, uh, storage shed provided, uh, by the concessionaire. And, um, most importantly, uh, the red trailer that we have had the benefit of using, uh, on a temporary status from the Nassau County Health Department is no longer going to be approved, uh, to be used as a temporary trailer. They are requesting that we, our, that our operator have a, uh, self-contained unit similar to the trailer that he put down by the roller rink, um, and, uh, D and J. are, uh, are willing to, uh, purchase that and get that in place, uh, there. So, uh, in return, I guess, uh, for, uh, some capital improvement and investment that the village does not have to, uh, to, to, to do, um, the licensee, uh, current licensee is requesting a three-year, uh, extension at twenty-six thousand dollars a year. This year, uh, in the current contract, he would have been paying twenty-six thousand according to the bid that was held, and, um, you know, we recommend, uh, this because I think, you know, better facilities we have, uh, better experience of the public have, uh, and the compliance that we're under with the health department. Uh, I think our, our vendor is, is, has proved himself, he's adapted, uh, to things at the pool that we've asked him to do. He's done previous, um, major capital improvements, uh, over the years as well. And as food concessionaires go, um, he is, uh, really one of the best, if not the best online, and fortunate to have him. Is that recommended from the rec. commission as well? Is this recommended from the rec. commission? Or- Well, I generally do the, the agreements to the rec. commission, so it's always been the department and board that, uh, and Mr. Swasey, um, that make these recommendations. Um, and the only other items is the award of some, uh, all field materials, which is- So just- Any, any questions or comments?
The only comment I wanted to make is in regards to what we just talked about, D and J. Refreshments, uh, basically, uh, home and run by John Parks, he's sitting on corner there. And John, just as an investor, John also lives in the community, and I can tell you from personal experiences I've expressed to many of the trustees, um, he gives it every opportunity, and just to share, uh, one point, uh, in past life, I was actually the president of the Garden City Scholarship Committee, when we first decided to start having wizards, which today now every year at the high school. And when we started, we had absolutely no idea what we were doing, so Mr. Parks went around and donated popcorn machine, donated the popcorn, uh, actually reached out to Coke and Pepsi, ended up getting us free things, and that's the kind of person that John Parks is. So, uh, I want, I want everybody just to know.
If you notice the comment, going five years I've been here, Mr. Parks has been a very reliable resource and has worked with us these last few years with cap improvements. I just want to point out that John, having this, any instruction we do on premises, even though, um, we're exempt from, uh, some of our own rules that we use on public business, we do want inspections, but maintenance issues that work, so building department, and appropriate professionals inspect the work, so that's all we request.
Any else, um, agenda? Highlight? I'll go through every item.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I will highlight item number eleven. Um, I'm, uh, requesting from the board, we, uh, purchased a new truck, this is an item that was on, uh, the, uh, equipment purchase from, uh, the eighteen, nineteen budget. Uh, the cost of the truck came in higher than was originally budgeted for, and this actually wasn't due to the truck, it was actually due to the equipment we buy along with the truck, their pricing changed, so the salt spreaders, the plows, and the other accessories that come with it, actually increased the purchase price of the truck. Uh, fortunately, there was, uh, some savings on other purchases in this account, so we do have money available in the fund, the capital fund, uh, to cover the cost of the additional, uh, to cover the additional costs of purchase of this truck, so I'm requesting authorization from the board to, uh, access those additional funds to purchase this truck, and then I'm requesting authorization to actually, uh, purchase the truck. Are you done?
Joe, could I just ask you, to change on the city, uh, very briefly, where do we stand on the water tower?
So, um, I actually had a phone call this morning with the, uh, tank builders, the coal tank. Um, we think we finally have approval from the, uh, Department of Health on the air quality monitoring that they're requiring during the demolition of the tower. I believe we received that today. Um, if everything goes well, if the paperwork is refiled and they approve, we could potentially start demolition a week from Monday. That's provided everything goes from the end.
Is that demolition going to affect the traffic on Old Country Road?
I mean, I, I don't want to say it won't, it, we're going to try to avoid it at all costs, but I, 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 I just don't think there's any way-
I, I, I think then maybe we should just put it on the website and send to the-
Absolutely. I've been waiting for a firm date before I-
There, there may be some disruption because of the-
Sure.
Do we have someone who's going to film the implosion? I can't, I don't have the-
We are going to film the, the timelines over the course of this-
Kid on the next exploding tank.
With that guy's house.
Yes, you and the school, so avoid that area during that time, right?
Yes, we're making, uh, some adjustments for bus stops in the area and-
Walkers.
Walkers, yes. The school's been very cooperative with us in terms of providing buses for students who walk there instead, so they don't have to walk, um, and it's been, it's, uh, good working relationship with the school.
Joe, you might also tell Minneola, because I know there's a Minneola bus stop almost across the street from that water tower, or down the block from it.
Yes.
And you know it's-
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, I know that there's a, for little kids, because I've seen the bus stop, and little children from Minneola getting on the bus on Old Country Road.
Yeah, everybody around is Nassau County, everybody's going to be on the work sites.
Trustee Foley also, the, uh, every month, this is the Francisco and Dr. Sinhar, um, people don't have any particular talk about, just to apprise each other what's going on in both our institutions, so that, uh, sometimes you pick things up that we otherwise know, so she's been fully involved, not any delays in that, this, uh, any stopping.
Any other item that anyone wants to bring up? Just generically, off, off the agenda. Chief, when are we getting that truck?
We have one member's go down last week to do an inspection of the truck, they, they build it, they set it up, they climb the ladder, they, they pull the performance, uh, came up the punch list. Um, I believe the truck will be, you know, the, once the punch list items are resolved, I think the truck will be here next week or weekend, it'll be brought up to the dealership over here in, uh, T. M., and some other, um, radio equipment, tools will be outfitted, and we should have a show there for them.
Chief, I think you, it's going to take about two months for it to get completely outfitted, posted.
Probably about that moment.
Okay.
As we all know, twenty nineteen is a, a very important year in Oak Village. We celebrate the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of when Alexander Stewart purchased the land on the Hempstead Plains and started to plot out the ideas of a planned community. At the same time, in nineteen ninety, we had a special event, the village became incorporated. So this twenty nineteen is the one hundredth and fiftieth anniversary of the very beginning of the community, and nineteen, twenty nineteen is one hundred years ago when we became the Incorporated Village of Garden City. We are planning a, a celebration for that, a centennial celebration, and you might want to make note of the date, it is Saturday, May twenty-fifth, with a rain date on Sunday, May twenty-sixth. Uh, it will be out on the St. Paul's grounds, uh, there will be food and dancing and music, there will be, uh, events for the children, uh, we are looking forward to that, and we hope that if you are in town, you will please plan to come. I think we'll all have a wonderful time. A lot of other things are being planned in regard to this, these anniversaries. Um, starting in about the middle of April, you're going to see an awful lot of things about the village in the Garden City News and in Garden City Life. Uh, there will be, uh, short historical tracks written by, uh, people who live in the village, and we will keep it going all the way in through the fall. The other thing that you are going to find, uh, in the Garden City News is an interesting, uh, chronological list of important things that you can do, even around us, in the areas around us, that can provide a historical insight to all of these, uh, things that we are so proud of. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew about the date, it is Saturday, May twenty-fifth, and it is rain date, please, heaven, we don't have to go near, something like that, on Sunday, the twenty-sixth. We're also going to put a chronological list in Garden City News and Garden City Life concerning what events are going to be provided for you. We, for example, another big highlight that we, as the village, are planning, is an interface, uh, prayer experience. We hope we can get the details of that worked, uh, worked out. You know, I, everyone is doing an awful lot of things, and to, uh, coordinate dates is very, very difficult sometimes in the village, but we would like to see something like that occur. So you will see, uh, things going on in the, in the papers and in your village all the way through till October at least, so try to remember them. Thank you. Oh, the other thing I would ask you is, uh, Tuesday, March nineteenth, is, uh, election day for the officials of the village. Uh, it's not just in the bag, sometimes strange things happen, something could, uh, someone could put in a write-in or something like that. But, uh, more important than that, to, um, show our respect for our village, for what a unique village it is, what a well-run village it is, uh, what a wonderful place it is. what a well-rounded village it is, what a wonderful place it is for our children to grow up, to come and set a good example and vote. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I'll note something, trustee Hire and I attended a meeting for a subcommittee in Nassau County, Nassau County Planning, dealing with trying to make some finalization of the area north of Stewart Field that we're trying to get to rehabilitate, enhance, preserve, whatever you want to call it, part of the Vanderbilt Parkway that's up there, and also it will provide us with some extra parking for that Stewart Field, which is always horrible. The subcommittee, I think it's called the Open Space Committee, approved it. For some reason, there were rumors floating that we were going to make a road between Ring Road and Clinton over there, so we ensured that that had nothing to do with this, and we agreed that whatever lease they want to give us, they can put that language in. We don't know where that came from, but for some reason, some rumors started, and someone was concerned about that name. Any, you know, move to any citizens' comments on agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, before you, before you do that, I had mentioned at one of our budget sessions that the police department, well, actually, the village was ranked one of the 13th safest villages in the United States, and I wanted to thank Commissioner and the police for what they do. 13th in the nation, which is pretty big, I would say. Garden City was ranked 13th.
Okay, anyone on a agenda item? Yes, sir. I want to...
Um, Mr. Mayor, is St. Paul on the agenda item?
No, no, it's not. No, not an agenda item. No, sir.
Can I put that in anyway?
No.
No, later on.
I don't think we'll have a long meeting here, so...
Okay, well, I got...
No, 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 wait, wait, let's, let's stick around.
I'll save St. Paul, I'll, I'll talk about things that you brought up.
Agenda.
Agenda. Agenda items.
Agenda items. Thank you very much. And hello, everybody. Let's see. Trustee, Alder, which...
Alder.
Alder. Earlier, you spoke about your past life wizards.
That's not an agenda item.
That's not an agenda?
No, no, if you want to talk about the concession agreement.
Okay, the concession agreement.
Concession agreement.
Yeah, exactly, the concession agreement.
Right.
You mentioned like wizards, I mean, what do we know about wizards?
Gabe, that's not the agenda item.
Gabe.
You want to talk about the concession agreement, go ahead.
Wizards with...
I know, I know, I know, I know, I'm leading up to that. I'm finding a little context. So what do you know about wizards, but, you know, Harry Potter and Jesus, okay? And then we talk about your past life. What I'm getting at is that you endorse popcorn, Pepsi, and Coke. So it was all through your past life, why didn't you stay there? I mean, we do not need popcorn laced with butter and whatever else they microwave it, and Coke, and Pepsi.
And just to let you know, there was no soda. What happened was that Pepsi and Coke donated cases of water.
Oh, okay, I, I think, but I said... Trustee...
It's not what I flavor.
Trustee, uh, trust, uh, who?
TruMane.
TruMane. You mentioned something of dancing. My question, is dancing still legal?
Oh, come on, later, stop.
No, seriously, you can't, okay, okay, I just, okay. And then you mentioned interfaith. I mean, this is something I always have a problem with. I mean, you have faith in your car mechanics, your airline pilot, I mean, what type of faith you referring to? Okay, you can clarify maybe later on, okay? Okay, that's it, I, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else with agenda-related questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. First, we will, we need a motion to approve, or unless anyone has any corrections or comments, on the minutes from our February 26, 2019 regular board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Trustee Delaney makes a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2019, seconded by trustee Hire. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we move to our consent calendar. Motion to approve the items on the consent calendar, or does anyone else have any more questions or comments? Trustee Delaney makes that motion, seconded by trustee Foley. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the portion of our meeting where we solicit comments or questions about anything in general, wizards included. We go to Mr. Lardy first.
Good evening, Steve Lardy, Meadow Street. Regarding 555, I understand there's going to be new owners, and I'd like to know, are the new owners still going to make the village whole as far as village taxes?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yes. Ownership does not matter, it's irrelevant.
Okay, and the new owner is still going to donate to the village $50,000 a year for 10 years, as was agreed with the previous group prior to the...
That's not part of this deal.
That's the Maria.
That's the Maria. That's not part of this deal.
Maria's going to contribute.
That's the Maria.
That wasn't part of 555. That was Maria. Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, I know they are a little present, but I just want everybody to relax.
Andrew.
What do rats, field mice, roaches, other bugs, horrible smells, mo, dry rot, rust have in common?
I give up water.
Water. They need, they all need water, everything. Okay, so regarding St. Paul, who's going to invest in this facility if there are all these potential issues? Nobody. So my plan is to completely put a dome around, the entire...
Andrew, wash your hands.
Entire building, the entire building, a giant dome. And once all of these issues are removed, then you can make a motion, make a studio, where you could designate moves for like music, designate moves for editing, designate moves for whatever, and how do you get people to, how do you get money to flood in? Well, promise them a movie to make them, or immortality, immortality, and they can fight their friends. Now, where does the story come from? The story begins with the children of Garden City, because it takes a village. The children of Garden City, they grab the kids, they start a story, and this story gets elevated to middle school, and this story gets elevated to high school, and this story gets elevated to college, okay? So what you have are thousands of amazing stories that have this big history of development, okay? Then everybody in the village gets to participate in the production. I mean, they don't get paid, let's say, like, like, what do they call it? Excess, excess, okay? And then, when the movie becomes a smash, the village raises them billions. I saw the movie Avatar, fortunately, it was garbage. This movie made billions, okay? Get what I'm saying? It has no story. It had no story. Okay, so I'm saying, you got a story, and you got actors. We went as Garden City as a village, you have the property, boats, cars, houses, beautiful girls. Beautiful girls. Let's not minimize that, what I'm saying, but also the story. And then you have the facility, you have where everything gets put together, get what I'm saying? Everything, and that's where the money floods in, because people got nothing, they're putting money, they're buying apartments, they've had for $100,000, there's nothing to do with that money. So instead, invested in this facility, and for the rest of their life, they have an opportunity to contribute to making movies.
30 seconds.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Carry on.
You always count, I'm a bit of a... What I want to walk...
I'm waiting for the, where's your director's feet cut? That's what I'm waiting for.
Exactly. First of all, I, I, first of all, first of all, I want a little love. Just a little bit, just a little love, a little excitement, heart of a broken, okay? That's part of it. And then, and then we'll just go from there.
Thank you for your thoughts. Anyone else on top of whatever you like?
Sir Smith, Pine Street. Going over the delicious story and myself, happy to be at the meeting that made it one of the preferred two. I just wanted to make the statement, because I did have to appreciate it, you had good sense. The mayor and trustee Hire put into it. It was, he was being kind, it was a contentious meeting at times, and he had his hair, they plowed through, and they came away with, I think, the best outcome that was possible.
It was total unanimous victory. It was total unanimous victory. Let's not shortchange ourselves.
I'm still waiting for their modification. The case is, I just went in on the record, it was a difficult meeting, they came through, I appreciate it, John, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and Mr. Felmer for helping us out. We appreciate it. Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
I think we need a motion to adjourn. Trustee Delaney makes the motion. We have a budget meeting next Thursday. Please come, please get the, please come. We, we, this is a note, we are probably going to have a few items not budget related. We anticipate we probably are going to choose the construction manager for St. Paul's. And again, this is not to build the building, this is just to help us with some initial rest, stabilization stuff and some other things, so, and will help us start getting on a process. And again, we don't even know if we're going to build it, but that's where we are. So thank you, I just hope you can come.